Opinions and contents of this show are those of the hosts, guests, and callers. They do not necessarily reflect those of Local Matters Broadcasting LLC, its owners, partners, affiliates, assigns, or airs. Having said that, it's now time to say good morning, St. John's County. Welcome to the weekly radio show of the St. John's County Council on Aging, better known in our community as the COA. We are your local nonprofit agency who, for the past 50 years, has been leading and advocating for the dignity, independence, health, and community involvement of older St. John's County residents. I'm Brian Robinson, Program Director for COA, broadcasting to you live from the studio of WFOY 102.1 FM, your local radio station for news, sports, and talk. Before we get into our show, let me remind everyone that if you have a question, a comment, or a suggestion for a radio show topic, or for today's topic, please send your email to radio@coasjc.org. This morning, I am honored to be joined by St. John's County Commissioner Krista Joseph. Commissioner Joseph attended the University of Arizona on a full academic and sports scholarship, and holds a Bachelor of Arts in Radio/TV with a minor in Marketing. An avid runner, she ran her first marathon at age 12, and lettered in running and track eight times. She later went on to be named High School Cross Country Coach of the Year in Arizona, and coached track in St. John's County as a volunteer at Ocean Palms Elementary. She is a mother of five, including two U.S. Navy SEALs. Krista is a frequent speaker to local organizations, inspiring others with memories of her son, Charlie Keating IV, who in 2016 was killed in a firefight with ISIS. His death made Krista a Gold Star Mom, a distinction no mother wants, but which is worn with pride. She continues to be interviewed by Fox and Friends about her son's sacrifices. She is an award-winning author of the Big Hearted Charlie series of children books. Her most notable book is Charlie: Don't Be a Hero, A Mother's Story of the Extraordinary Life of Her Son, U.S. Navy SEAL Charlie Keating IV. Krista Joseph has lived in Florida since 2007, 10 of those years in St. John's County. Her first job in the public service sector was a governor-appointed position on the Citrus County Hospital Board. She was confirmed by the Senate for a second term, and helped turn around a failing hospital while saving millions in taxpayer dollars. In 2022, she was elected by the residents of District 4 to a four-year term to serve on the St. John's County Board of Commissioners. Welcome, Commissioner Joseph.
Good morning. Happy to be here. I love it.
Good to have you, and what a great bio that you have, and great to have you to be here on the show with us. We appreciate all that you do, serving us in your role as Commissioner. So I wanted to start off, I have lots of my own questions. But I wanted to start off with some of the questions that we have received from some of our seniors. And a lot of it has to do with transportation. So this is, I'm going to kind of do two questions wrapped in the one here. So this says this, a couple of our seniors wrote and asked this. There are many seniors in Nocati that never go anywhere but to the doctor because of lack of transportation. Will the county be providing public transportation in the Nocati area in the future? And then I want to tag on another one from somebody that's in the same line of questioning here. Seniors in the Ponte Vedra area take advantage of Beaches/COA's Dial Ride because public transportation is sorely needed. Is there anything in the works?
Well, there's always that opportunity, and the most important thing is to voice your opinion, because the more opinions we hear, the more we start planning. But there is an infrastructure plan that's in the works right now, and also, we are having a comprehensive plan. So until you voice what you really want, we can't address it. But there are already the Dial Rides, and we're also looking at putting a little library community center near Nocati, where the park in Nocati is going to be. And that will be a 10,000-square-foot library, a kind of a community center, and that'll be a great place for people to meet, as well as the COA to have an outreach program there. I think it would be a great idea. You know, the COA, I really didn't know anything about it till I became a Commissioner, and I went over to the River House, and it is the most beautiful, calming place.
It is.
And anyone can go over there, 18 and older, right?
Absolutely, yes. So through the week, Monday through Thursday, we have different classes. And it's mostly seniors who do come, but it is for anybody 18 or older, so we call it a lifelong learning center. So yes, it's a small fee to go and attend, you know, if you, if your class is one hour a week, it's $25 for the month.
Wow.
And then if it's two hours a week, it's $50 for the month. And so, you know, we try to keep the cost low, and we've really seen an increase. We'll talk a little bit about, more about that a little bit later, but we've seen an increase in attendance in the past year and a half.
Well, what was just amazing is, you know, you feel like this is a totally government-funded or grant-funded program, but when I was over there, you actually run the River House for a profit in weddings or community services that actually, you know, do fill the gap of your funds. And I just remember, when I first walked in there, the beautiful river view, and sitting on the patio was the most peaceful area. And now that I'm over 60, so I can actually
Well, there you go.
Enjoy the library in there, and I saw women and men doing exercise classes, and I was just really impressed that the county offers this, and I think a lot of people don't even know about it.
I think that is true, and I think a lot of people, one of the things that I'm constantly stating is, a lot of people don't realize that we're a nonprofit. They think that because St. John's County is in our name, that the county operates us. And that is not the case. We are a nonprofit. We do receive funding from federal, state, and county, but it's not enough. You know, it covers about 67% of what we do. So we rely on grants, and we rely on our donors to support the rest of what we do. So let me get back to a couple other questions here. So we have, first of all, somebody I wanted to compliment you on the update to the Bird Island Park.
Oh, I love that park.
Yeah.
Well, I live, you know, I live over in Ponte Vedra Beach, because I'm District 4, but the park, you know, has a couple of, especially one person named Mary, who loves the Bird Island Park, and actually helps with keeping it under control, the planting, the flowers. And then we have a great team for the county. I'm trying to remember his name. I just talked to him yesterday. He's really a great guy. He's out there making sure that the plants and everything's cut and trimmed, and we finally got the boardwalk finished. And, you know, it's just a peaceful place also, and there's a kids' playground in the back, which I'm kind of going to advocate to update that a little bit when I get a chance to talk to Ryan Kane, who's our Parks and Rec guy. But it's right next to the library, so you can do multiple things. Not only you can vote at the library, you can also check out a book, or books on tape, and then go over to the Bird Park and sit there and enjoy a little sack lunch or whatever, but it's very safe, and I enjoy going by there as much as I possibly can.
Well, that's one thing that is amazing about our county, is just so many different places like that, just, you know, so many great places of nature to go and just enjoy.
Yeah, and the community. But the community, really, even the seniors especially, want to keep St. John's County the way they remember it, especially if they've been here for their life. And they like to see, you know, not having the clear cutting. They like to see having parks and the trees, and places where they can get solace and solitude, you know, and we do have a transportation system with the Sunshine Bus Service that can help them do that, especially on Wednesdays. It's Free Library Day, so if you go to the library on the Sunshine Bus, it's free. So you can go to the library, spend the day at the park, get back on and go back. But, I mean, I just, I just think we have so many services that people don't know about. And if you don't have the internet, I mean, a lot of, I mean, I don't even like using the internet, but I do, because I have to for my job, but, you know, there's a phone number that you're going to give that you can call. I don't mind people calling me and asking me the questions. I can call them back. I, I mean, I'm serving you, so, you know, you're paying for my job, and I work as hard as I can, and I will work, I will continue to work as hard as I can.
Well, great. Well, we're going to be coming up on our first commercial break here in just a moment, so let me just give out those phone numbers. So for COA, our main number is 904-209-3700. And then for Commissioner Joseph, she has been gracious enough to let me announce her work cellphone number. And so if you have a, you want to reach out to her with a question or a situation that you're dealing with, that number is 904-679-2620. Again, that's 904-679-2620. We're going to go ahead and take our first commercial break, and when we come back, we have lots more questions for Commissioner Joseph. This is the COA Weekly Radio Show on 102.1 FM. And welcome back to the Weekly Radio Show of the St. John's County Council on Aging. I'm Brian Robinson, Program Director for COA, joined this morning by St. John's County Commissioner Krista Joseph. And so before we went to commercial break, I was giving you some questions from some of our seniors that had asked me to ask you the questions. You talked a little bit about a library in Nocati that's coming up in the near future, and another senior wants to know about a post office that might be coming up in Nocati.
Well, post office is really not anything that, you know, that's kind of the government, U.S. government. I'd love to say I could, I heard about one, but I haven't, but that's, you know, I'm not going to say I know everything I need to know, but I can find out for you, so, you know, I can always get back to you on that.
And so the library, what is the timeframe on that?
Well, it's being discussed, so it isn't in stone, but the idea of a hub kind of a library, and do that all over the county, maybe in four other locations where we're building the parks. So if we attach these to the parks, think how cool that would be. So a parent has a kid playing soccer on the fields, or baseball, and the other part of the family's in the library, or grandma's there, and she's in the library and goes out and watches, you know, the grandchild, and then goes back to the library. I just think it would be a great combination of things, and so everywhere we build a park, we build a hub library. And if they're around 10,000 square feet, you know, that'll have meeting rooms, places to meet, to pick up, to pick up some books, but as well as, you know, a community place where people can get together and talk, and maybe do exercise classes. I mean, you know, the future, we're open. I mean, that's the great thing about our staff and our team, I like to call them, I like calling them a team, because we all try to work together, is we try to keep saying yes instead of no all the time. So we try to find out how to say yes, and keep it going forward, and that's what I try to do, too. I try to have a positive attitude, and try to figure out how to get something done instead of just saying, no, we're not going to do that.
Well, one of the things that I have discovered in my role at COA is that when dealing with seniors, you know, maybe it's because of their age, but they usually don't
Come on!
They get to a point where they don't have a filter anymore, right?
I think that's great.
Yeah, so this one, so keep that in mind as I give you this next one. So this next question, what is the county doing about all the traffic congestion? Are they going to build more roads because it's a real dilemma? Exclamation mark.
Exclamation parking, and I'm right there with you, because I drove an hour to get here from Ponte Vedra Beach, which is, which is crazy to think our county is so large that to go from one side of it to the other is over an hour, is really something that you should really think about. But as a Commissioner, you know, I'm, I want to slow the growth, and I think the key to controlling the traffic is to not keep approving many, 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 many multifamily homes until we catch up our infrastructure. Our infrastructure's falling apart. There's no reason we should be approving any more homes until we get those roads done. And I know that the developers are starting to participate in building the roads ahead of time, but that's too late right now. Right now, we need to get 16 going. We have 210 coming up, but it's going to take years for these roads to be finished. And we are, we know what's happening, we know there's a problem, and we're trying as quickly as we can to get like a light at Pine Island Road onto US 1 because of accidents. We know racetrack road's a problem. We know 210's a problem. Again, if I could be Bewitched, which was one of my favorite shows, I would twinkle my nose and have it done now, and it would really make a lot of people more happy. But again, what I can do personally is try to control and slow the growth in my own district.
Well, speaking of 16, you know, I moved here in October of 2018, and it seems like that section of road up by the outlet malls has been under construction
Forever.
Since I moved here. So like, can you give us an update on what's going on with that?
Well, there's a big combination of different agencies, so that's the biggest problem. If St. John's County were in control of the whole highway, freeway, off-ramp, on-ramp, that would be great. But, you know, DOT has their rules of, they want to have more U-turns and not as many lights, they want to have their, their things that they want, and then there's things that we want. We want, we want to get it going and get it done, but there's all these different government agencies that all need to be on the same page. And, you know, it takes money, it takes time, it takes geniuses to put it all together. And, you know, again, we're trying to do it, we're working on it, and I hear you.
All right, well, let me move to some of the questions that I have that are related to COA, since this is the COA radio show. So first, I want to just say that we are very appreciative of the use of county-owned buildings for our senior programming. We meet in five county-owned buildings, the Al Wilkie Community Center in Hastings, Trout Creek Community Center in Orange Dale, the Players Community Senior Center in Ponte Vedra, the Ponte Vedra Memory Center in Ponte Vedra, and then our main location, 180 Marine Street, is also a county-owned building. Now, we are starting to get more inquiries from residents in the northwest part of the counties, such as Julieton Creek and Durbin Park areas, wanting to know when COA is going to open a senior center in their area. So my question to you is, are there any county-owned buildings in this area of the county that could possibly serve as a senior center, and if not, are there any plans in the works to build a community center in that area that could be a location we could use for senior program?
Well, of course, we're always, always looking. I mean, I've got my eye on Switzerland, there's a gentleman who's been pushing for a community center there, in a historical building there. I mean, I just see the need, and the more people that move here, as well as the baby boomers that are getting older and live here already, I mean, it's really, really important, and that's why I do think that including these libraries, you know, in Hastings, we now have a library going in within, within a year and a half, it's going to be a great little community center there. We are doing things, it's getting those grants together and matching them with County General Fund, or just the amount of work we're trying to find. But the best and most important thing you could do today is to go to the library, fill out a comprehensive plan, survey, and make sure you put on there what is important to you, and make sure you do it over and over again. We already have a couple thousand surveys that have been finished, we need more. And if you can go online, the survey is also online, but I just sat here trying to find it just now, and it's very difficult on the website to find. So just be patient and try to find it on there. I'm actually going to go address that when I get done with this radio show, to say, why isn't it up front? Because it should be something that everyone can get to immediately. If you don't have, if you have no ability to get on the website, give me a call, and I can tell you where the closest survey is, the kiosk is put, whether it's the library or, I was also thinking it should be at DMV, because you sit there and wait to
This is true, yes.
To fill out your, your information for a license. But I do know at our main building, Administration Building and the Permit Center, I think there's one there, and that's 500 Sebastian, it's near, kind of near the jail and the Permit Center and the courthouse. So I know there's one in there. But again, give me a call, and I can follow that up for you personally.
Great, and again, the number that you could call is 904-679-2620.
And again, I mean, the more you can tell us, the better it'll be, and, you know, it's important to get your knowledge and your thoughts about everything on that survey.
Right, and so I just want to mention, we'll begin the commercial break here in just a minute, so there are three public meetings coming up for the Comprehensive Plan and Strategic Plan. So that's next week, March 26, and all the times are 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. So March 26 at the W.E. Harris Community Center in Hastings, March 27 at the Waterworks Building on, at 184 San Marco Avenue in St. Augustine, and then March 28 at Creekside High School in St. John's. And so you're really putting forth an effort to get the community involved and come out to these meetings, so that they can voice their opinion on things like this.
Yeah, we had a meeting in Ponte Vedra. It was really fun. I mean, and it's exciting, and it's very cool, the way they're doing it, and they really do listen to what you have to say. And, you know, it's worth going. It's worth talking to your neighbors and putting down what your thoughts are, because it's going to make a difference.
Right, and so this new plan will take place in 2025 is when it will.
Correct.
So this is great that you're taking time, so that people can voice their opinion, so that you can put all the data together to really know what they're wanting to do. If there's a senior who would like to participate but can't come to the meeting, and maybe they don't do the internet, right, so they're not going to get on the website, is there another way that they can?
Call me, and I'll tell you where the library is. They have a kiosk at every library, and remember, Free Library Day on Wednesday.
Free Library Day, okay. Well, that music means that we're coming up on our next commercial breaks. This is the COA Radio Show on 102.1 FM, your local radio station for news, sports, and talk. And welcome back to the Weekly Radio Show, the St. John's County Council on Aging here on WFOY 102.1 FM, your local radio station for news, sports, and talk. I'm Brian Robinson, Program Director for COA, joined today by St. John's County Commissioner Krista Joseph. And one of the things that I wanted to do is just make a little correction. In my introduction, I had stated that the residents of District 4 had elected you to a four-year term, but it's actually everybody in the county, so I apologize for
Oh, no, no worries, but it's, it's great going forward, so that people know that in the upcoming elections that you're voting for all five, so, you know, I mean, all five are not up for reelection today, but that's the election.
Right, okay, so everybody gets to vote for the Commissioner regardless of
Right.
What district they might be representing.
Exactly, so it's important to, you know, see what they've done and what they're going to do.
Okay, good to know. All right, so one of the things that I wanted to just highlight today, because one of the things that I'm missing, and you were going to attend as well, is our annual board meeting that's open to the public. And so currently, at this very moment, at the River House, we're having our annual board meeting, and one of the things that they're going to highlight is some of the things that we accomplished last year. And so when we took the numbers and we compared 2022 to 2023, our data revealed that we served significantly more people in 2023. So I just want to kind of run through
I would love to hear it.
And highlight some of those.
Right.
So our independent living services, so basically, in that department, we are coordinating the care to help keep seniors in their homes, okay? So that increased by 7%. Our COA Center at UF Health Nocati increased by 13% in attendance. Our Trout Creek Senior Center by 17%. The Player Senior Center by 20%. Our Care Connection Department, that is a donor-funded, volunteer-led department that we have, and they do things like go out and cut the grass for our seniors, they build wheelchair ramps for seniors, they go and install grab bars, minor home repairs, and then we have some supplies on hand, such as like, things that are, that can be very expensive, so, you know, like the depend undergarments.
How do they reach out for that? Just to call?
Just call our main number, 904-209-3700, and tell them that they want to speak to someone in Care Connection. We have the assisted devices, such as wheelchairs and walkers and so forth. So just trying to, you know, another way of keeping seniors in their homes. And so that increased by 36%. Our Hastings Senior Center, a 41% increase. Our Coastal Community Center, 53% increase. Our IMAP, which is our Integrated Memory Enhancement Program, increased by 60% in attendance. Our River House Lifelong Learning Center increased by 76%.
Wow.
And our community caregiving support increased by 80%
Wow.
In participation. So these increases are indicative that the senior population of our county has grown. It is going to continue to grow. Now, as I've mentioned before on this show, and earlier this morning, we do receive federal, state, and county funds, as well as grant funding and donor funding, to provide our programming and our services. But with this increase in participation last year, and the expected increase this year and in the future, our current funding levels are not sufficient. So I'm wondering if you have any suggestions on other funding sources that we could pursue?
Well, there's, I mean, the biggest thing is the grants, and your grant person is spectacular, and she's always looking for something, you know, and I feel like you have to get creative and watch the legislative things that are coming down, because they could apply to us, depending on how your marketing is, and how you present how popular this entire, your entire services has become. And, you know, just getting on this radio show word out of how successful you are reaches so many more people, especially donations from the private community. I mean, I, just to throw it out there, I've also mentioned this for the library, also is, why not, you know, a public, a private entity, you know, like Flagler Hospital, or someone who has direct, wants to advertise directly to the senior population, and also wants to get involved in the, in the COA. I think there's those kind of marketing opportunities that you could look forward to. Again, I mean, I've had experience just with Matt McCord, who is the transportation for, you know, transporting, if you're handicapped, or to different locations, to the doctor or whatever. There's a problem. They contact me, I contact Matt, within moments, he takes care of it. So your, your actual people that are working behind the scenes are really trying as hard as they can, and they love the COA. They love what it does, they, they see the results, and look, we see the results. I mean, this is incredible, and, you know, just you showing me these things today, of course, going forward, I will look into this more often, and more often, as in tomorrow.
Yeah, well, and I just want to give a shout out to our staff.
Oh, they're incredible.
I mean, we employ, I believe it's, you know, 160, 165 people, you know, from the people that are doing the programming and the services, to the bus drivers that are out there
Oh, man.
Transporting everybody.
They don't just work nine to five, they work all the time.
Yes, absolutely, and I just want to give a shout out to them, as well as our volunteers, because we have over, I think, 600 volunteers, active volunteers, that we would not be able to do what we do without, without our volunteers.
And, you know, I just, I hope you understand, the volunteers are really giving back to the community, they should just feel really good about themselves. I know it's hard, you know, I do, my husband does have ALS right now, and I have a caregiver while I'm here on the radio show. I see, as well as what I personally do, and I see what she does, and we all need a break, and, I mean, I was just talking to you about your Sunshine Center
Sunshine Center.
Which is amazing, where a caregiver can drop, you know, a memory deficient person off there, and you're, and have a break, and then go back. But these kind of services are really, really needed in our county, and I'm so glad you're bringing this to my attention, as well as to the public's attention right now.
Well, and then also, again, just to reiterate, I mean, we wouldn't be able to do this without the partnership that we have with the county. I mean, you allow us to use these buildings, and then, you know, we do, we do receive some funding as well.
Right, from Health and Human Services, yes.
Yeah, and then, so Health and Human Services, we receive funding, and then we also recently were awarded the RFP for the senior centers.
Yep.
So we do get some funding from that as well. And so, you know, we wouldn't be able to do what we do without what the county does for us.
Well, and you're showing results. I mean, when you show results, how can you not do something? I mean, this is excellent, and the way you're tracking it, and honestly, we don't get many complaints at all, so.
Well, thank you.
I mean, when you start getting those, you worry, but
They're out there, we do get them.
No, no.
We do get them from time to time, because we are not perfect by any means, we do drop the ball from time to time. But I just want to reiterate, I mean, we just have some great staff who love to serve the seniors of this county. They absolutely do.
And thank God.
And, and I've always said this, you know, pretty much everybody who works for COA is not in it for the money, right? Because we are a nonprofit, and so, you know, people aren't in it to, you know, because of the amazing salaries that we pay. It's because they really, truly have a heart for the seniors that we
Well, and I think every senior, you think, oh, it's just an older person, I think you have to realize that they have goals also. You know, my dad is 90, my mom is 88. You know, I think of them as, oh, they're just, you know, feeding themselves and watching TV, sitting there. You know, no, you know, they all have goals that they want to finish, so.
All right, we'll continue our conversation just a little bit. This is the Weekly Radio Show of the St. John's County Council on Aging. We'll be right back. And welcome back to the Weekly Radio Show of the St. John's County Council on Aging. I'm Brian Robinson, Program Director for COA, joined today by St. John's County Commissioner Krista Joseph, and this is the last segment of our show, and Krista, you were about to, you were about to finish a sentence, and then the music kicked on for our
No problem. Well, now, the only thing I was going to say is, you're never too old to start something, whether it's pickleball, or writing your own book, you could be 90. My dad, I just keep telling him not to get on the roof, and he's 91. So, you know, my dad's still out there doing the lawn, and I'm like, ah, and so anyway, that was where I was going with that.
Well, and that keeps them young.
Yes.
Right? I mean, so
And part of the community.
Yeah, about a year and a half ago, my mom, who lives in West Virginia, you know, up to that point, was living at home by herself, taking care of her home, you know, up until a couple years before that, she was cutting her own grass, I mean, she was, you know, very active, driving everywhere, but then she fell and broke her hip.
Oh, man.
And then she never fully recovered, and so, you know, last year, we had to sell her home, we moved her into an apartment right, right next to my brother, and so that's worked out very well. But yeah, if they can stay active, that's, that's a really good thing for them. So, but you had mentioned, we were talking a little bit about your, your husband and being diagnosed with ALS. being diagnosed with ALS. And, you know, one of the things that I think is just good for our listeners who are out there, listening, you know, then there might be somebody that's kind of going through something similar where they're caring for a loved one, whether it's a parent or spouse or even a child.
Right.
That's dealing with something similar to that, whether physically or mentally. And I was just wondering if you would just be willing to kind of open up and just kind of share about, you know, what that experience has been like for you?
Well, it's been, it's been incredibly, you know, I, I now feel for anyone in a wheelchair, which, you know, you, you, you are kind to people and you try to, to help them, but you don't realize how disjointed they are. I mean, my husband's the very same person. His brain, his mind is all there, his body has failed him. And it started, I found out the diagnosis the very day I started in the office, the very first day in the office. And he had been out with my election, holding my signs and couldn't keep holding them. And he thought, that is weird. So this is when we found out. And it's been very progressive. He's already in a wheelchair, but now I'm, I'm looking for ADA places. I'm, I'm looking for, you know, he, he, when you're in a wheelchair, people talk over you and he's not included in conversations. And here he is, he was a hand surgeon until two years ago. He was, he's Olympic bronze medalist. He's an active guy. We were paddle boarding, running, biking. He ran a 5K in Hastings a year and a half ago. And here he is, he can't move from the neck down. And it's very, very sad and tough for him to keep including him. And so my goal and his goal is to stay productive. So yesterday he was on a blog, a national blog for ALS. He's trying to help all those he can because it's, it's a devastating disease. I don't know between dementia and Alzheimer's and what he has, I, I cannot imagine any other worse thing you could possibly get. He's trying to stay positive, we're trying to stay positive and every day do something, even if he sits under the tree in the sun, it's, it's, it's a good day. So, you know.
And, and I'm sure it's been emotionally and mentally quite an adjustment for both of you.
Oh, absolutely. Plus, you know, I want to do my job too. So I include him in some of the things that I'm working on. And again, he's, he's being productive as in coming to my meetings. You might, if you come to one of my Tuesday board meetings, you might see him in there. Go up, touch him on the shoulder, talk to him because, you know, people do ignore people that are in a wheelchair. We'll be in a, I will take him to a restaurant and I will be feeding him in a nice restaurant. And I know some people don't want to see that or don't like it, but you know what? He's still a person and we all are people. And that's why the COA is so important because you're keeping people in the world, in the community and giving them joy. And why not, you know?
Yeah. And that's one of the things that we advocate for is their dignity.
There you go.
Right? And that's exactly what you're doing is you're maintaining your husband's dignity by still going out and, and enjoying things and, and ignoring what people, what people think.
I just hope someone does it for me.
Well, you know, and one of the things that you brought up is like, you don't really notice some of the things until you're kind of in that position, right? So my wife, her father, back in 2010, had a brain, brain aneurysm rupture and ended up paralyzed on his left side. And then we took care of him for three years up until he passed. But it was basically like taking care of a 200-pound baby because we had to feed him, we had to bathe him, we had to shave him, you know, we had to do it all for him. I mean, he could help a little bit because his right side wasn't paralyzed, but, but it was, it was very, very challenging. But one of the things that I did notice when we would go out on a very rare occasion to go out to eat, you know, there might, he might need to go to the bathroom, but it wasn't handicap accessible.
Exactly.
And, but you don't pay attention to that until you're in the situation.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And so I think it's important that, that we let that be known so that more people are aware of.
I agree. And, and the fact that we're, we're talking about the COA, this is exactly the things that we want to keep looking for as we go forward and have a community center and make sure it's accessible. And, you know, my husband's in one of those Stephen Hawking's chairs. You know, honestly, it's a little wider. You know, the door, certain doors he can't get in even to get a haircut. So yes, I mean, I'm going to keep, you know, my visual, you know, now that I know what's going on, I'm going to keep looking for those opportunities.
Well, when we think of, now that you're, you're in this situation as a caregiver and, you know, one of the things that we provide is caregiver support through COA. And as I mentioned, we saw an 80% increase last year compared to 2022. And, you know, I'm very thankful for Paula Kozlowski, who heads up our community caregiver program. And it's, it's so important for our caregivers, one, to get the respite that they need.
Yes.
But also to connect with other caregivers.
Absolutely.
Who are going through the same thing. So can you maybe speak into kind of your experience with that?
Well, yes, because when he was having a hard time, when he could still use his hands a little bit to eat, I didn't have the right utensils. And guess how I found out? Is I, I ran into someone actually at a COA meeting who was a retired nurse and she said, oh, there's this website you can go on to look for this or that. And I mean, I just, you know, I was just in the Mayo, which we are in the ALS area there, and I asked, is there a place where I can go and find, you know, used wheelchairs or used utensils or something like that or a lift? And they're like, no. And I thought, well, maybe one day I'll open some big.
Well, we have used wheelchairs at the COA.
There you go.
Yes. So if you need one, come.
But no, just getting, getting near people that you can, you know, commensurate with, but as well as learn new things.